...of the Port Arthur Independent School District Regular Meeting. We're starting at 5:00 p.m. We'll have your application by trustee Lomary Johnson, pledging to the United States and Texas Flag Roll Call. Let's stand, excuse me, trustee Johnson.
Goodbye, Ed. Dear Father, we always come before you with thanksgiving and praise. We thank you, Lord. We thank you for your goodness, your mercy, and your faithfulness. We pray to you for what you have done, are doing, and will do for this school district and this board. Lord, we pray for continued direction as we hear from your voice and follow your vision. Lord, let us be obedient to your will and your way as we conduct the business of the district. Lead us and guide us, letting your love, your goodness, and your praise be our roadmap. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Our mission statement. Our mission as the primary source of public education in the community is to meet the unique educational needs of our diverse population by providing a comprehensive quality education for the students of the Port Arthur Independent School District. At this time, we're going to slightly deviate from the agenda. We're going to go into the budget retreat, but before we do, I would like to take this opportunity to thank my fellow board members and Dr. Porterie for the year that I have served under the board. Thank you to the administration team for all of your support and all of your help. Because when Dr. Porterie finished the information, you won't hear my voice again. So, on behalf of myself, thank y'all very much and God bless you all. Thank you. Dr. Porterie.
Thank you, President Ambrose. We'll, as she said, move a little different. We'll have the budget retreat first, then we'll do the swearing-in reorganization, and then reception, and then go into a close meeting.
Pardon, Dr. Porterie. Mrs. Stages, would you please come along?
President Ambrose.
Here.
Vice President Brown.
Here.
Secretary Barti.
Here.
Trustee Frank.
Here.
Trustee Johnson.
Here.
Trustee Lofton.
Here.
Trustee Reed.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we are at that point where we're getting ready to discuss the budget. This is your first meeting with yourself before it comes to a vote in August. Right now, we're looking pretty good. There is a lot of things that we would like to do for the district. Not sure if we will be able to do all of them, but we definitely want to try. So, I will turn it over to Mrs. James, and she will introduce her staff who's here with her, and we'll go through the presentation that is before you. I can give you that.
Okay. She said we finished our presentation, which has...
Sorry.
Well, you've got the budget information organized for tonight. It's in... Press you?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. It's indexed in several groups. This should be very familiar to you because we usually go over the budget information each year. It's intentional to just kind of refresh your memory about how our accounting system is set up to make sure you have an understanding of our requirements from TEA. So, the first part is just general budget information. Then we have general accounting information, which goes a little bit more detail. Then we will talk about where we are now, and we will conclude with where are we going? So, on page three, the budget process. We establish the projections each year. We work real hard with our budget committee, and that includes the executive team members as well as the controller Denise Davis, and it also includes Stephanie Bar, who is here with us. She's our budget accountant. We establish the expectations based on the projection and projected enrollment. We work closely with the campuses to make sure that we know exactly what our budgets need to be for each campus. The way we have it organized, the non-payroll budget is really, we get information from the campuses on the non-payroll budget, on the payroll budget. Although we get input from the campuses, it really is managed more by the budget committee on the number of positions and funding if we are going to add any position. Again, we receive input from the campuses, but the budget is actually prepared by the HR department. Review and seek approval of the budget on the vote from the board. So, on the next page, we show you our calendar. And on our calendar, please note, it's got a lot of details, and I do not plan to go over all the details, but this is just to give you an idea. Again, this is a refresher of the budget process and the calendar. On the next page, we focus in on the board retreats. Today, as Dr. Porterie indicated, is our first budget retreat. We do plan to come back next month with the second budget retreat. On the eighth, we will have our third, and then we plan to be prepared to adopt our budget on the 22nd of August. Accountability requirements. We are required by TEA to ensure that our budget is balanced. So, we work real hard once we find out exactly what the budget restrictions are, how many dollars that we will get, to ensure that we do not budget for more dollars than what we will be receiving. We prepare the budget in accordance with the federal, state, and local guidelines, and it is truly, we base it on evaluation of efforts and what exactly do we need in our school district to make it work for us. We are, again, we're in compliance with our legal requirements. But for us, our bible is almost, it's our, we call it the fast rate. That second bullet that's there, TEA holds us very accountable for the account numbers, so that's why we will spend a few minutes tonight talking again about those account numbers. And then, of course, you are intimately involved with the board policies, so we can make sure that we're in compliance with the policies as we create our budget. The state requirements. It requires, it has some strict dates for us. We must be prepared to adopt our budget by the 31st of August. We must make sure to be publicized the budget by the 10th, have notice of budget information posted in the paper by, before 10 days, at least 10 days before we actually adopt our budget. Again, we must also be compliant with GETI GAST, which are governmental guidelines, which we must adhere to. And we must legally adopt our budget before our tax rate. So, sometimes you may remember in our budget meeting, we normally do both our budget and our tax rate at the same time. We'll ask to pull one of the, I pulled the budget and make sure that we approve it before we do our tax rate because it is required to be done in that order. TEA requirements. Again, the budget itself must be adopted by the 31st, and we must ensure that we take care of amendments for certain categories. You may remember that we bring to you during the year budget amendments all year, and we're trying to make sure that we're in compliance with general fund and fund, food service fund and debt service fund. The reason we have to do that and set the fund and function level is because we're required by TEA. And at the end of the year, when the auditors come, they usually include a write-up and discussion on where we're in compliance with the budget, did we prepare budget amendments for all the changes that took place during the year. The local requirements. The board has adopted a fund balance policy, and it's included in our board policies. We have also a debt service policy that we've implemented. Investment requirements, and you'll see tonight on the agenda, one of the investment requirements is for us to make sure that you are looking at the investment policy on an annual basis. Therefore, the investment policy is included in your board material, your board package for tonight. Property tax exemption parameters, the board has adopted which property tax exemptions that we've agreed to. We have some financial performance comparison measures that we actually use, and those measures you will see when we come back to you and look at school first, we are measured by those. This year, they have tightened up on school first guidelines. It's going to be tough to make an ARB. We are going to work extremely hard, but they add a lot of, increase the number of indicators of what they consider comparable analysis to all the schools. And then we also provide, and on our website, you will see staffing levels. We try to keep our, we have some compared to school districts that we look at the staffing levels and try to compare ourselves to those other school districts, just so you'll get some general idea, and the public will get some general idea of our staffing levels and the amount of dollars that we pay for the different positions. But there's a new requirement, and this came about last year, I believe. They said we must, and one of those indicators that we must discuss with the board is the funding lag. There's a lot of details on this one slide. So, I will just kind of convince it for you that the big bullet point issue is that what the state uses to determine our collection is not the same thing that we use for our collections. We're using the local tax, the local tax amount, the rate we use. We also are using the tax assessed values for the current year. That's not the way the state uses the values. They go back one year. So, we are required to make sure that you are aware of the one-year lag in the way the tax, the values are calculated. Now, what does that mean to you? And look at those bullets there on the bottom. It says, "Fast-growing school districts based on the number of students could receive less than required," based on how the formula is working. "But slow-growing or stable school districts based on the number of students could receive more than required, which could result in a refund from TEA." TEA doesn't wait until, they wait until the last minute. They may give you more money, but then they're quick to just take it back.
So, Mrs. James, pardon me, where does that money come from?
TEA.
No, does it come from us if we're one of those issues that are slow-growing or something?
TEA assesses how much they plan to give us based on all of the variables that they use, such as prior year, tax rate, and everything. But in their calculation, and they do two calculations. One is they have a value that they're using, and it's based on what's in the legislative session. They get the property values from the appraisal district, and they use that data to determine what they're planning to provide to the district over that biennial period. So, they use that information. But in fact, if they find, when they true everything up at the end of the year, that's after we've received the money. They don't do the true up until August or September of the following year. They will ask for a refund. And so, what they will do most of the time, they don't just ask for a refund, they deduct it from the amount that you will receive the following year. So, for us this year, they took out $1 million. They said they overpaid us $1 million. You don't find that out again until after you've already received the money. So, you have to manage by going in, reviewing, keeping track, and keep your own documentation on what your number of students are. Keep your own documentation on any variables that would change during the year. Make sure that you're keeping track of your collection. So, multiple times during the year, we are constantly looking at our those variables to make sure we know what we will be receiving from TEA, or what they'll take back. Okay. Now, so, let's go a little bit deeper into that. So, we adopt, the board adopts what we call the tax rates, and you're familiar, our $1.17, thanks to our taxpayer. We're at the highest rate of $1.17 for our MNO rate, and our highest rate is of just about .31 cents. Just under .32 cents, that was what we committed to. But the state, what they are using is an effective calculated rate, and it's computed by dividing the this year's collections by 100, and then they take the prior year tax assessed values. Strange. So, in the next slide, we want to just kind of graphically show you what we're speaking of. So, we're in school year 2018-19. The tax year that we're using for the district's property tax collection is 2018. What the state is using for its share of the calculation is the 2017 values. The MNO rate that we use is the $1.17, but they use what they call an effective tax rate, so they recalculate when our rate is, and it's a $1.45 for this. We use a certified tax room, which we received in June, the end of June last year. It's 6 billion, but notice they're going to use, they're using the 3.5 billion. So, the collections that they're showing for them is different than what we're showing. We're showing, when we did our calculation, we would get somewhere around 51 million. Even though it's still 51 million, those few dollars make a difference in what we see and what we can use. We're just giving you a good example of the variances. If you're wondering why our certified property value was so much higher in the current year than it was in 2017, remember Motiva, Chapter 313, they spied. So, we are recognizing it in 2018, but the state doesn't recognize it in this year. They will recognize those values next year. So, that kind of gives you a general idea of the tax rate, so let's move into the accounting part of this. As I said, we've shown you these slides over and over again. We show it every year, but we want to make sure you understand how our account structure is set up so that when you see the board items, and it's the very bottom of the board item, and it shows you the accounting stream, you'll get a better understanding of what we're seeing. The first three digits is fund code, and the second digits is the function, the object, and sub-object. There's a whole lot of numbers. But the bottom line is, we're going to go through just each one of them and kind of give you a general idea of what those numbers mean. Fund codes. So, notice 164. That's what we're doing when we charge any expenses for Hurricane Harvey. We're using fund code 64. It's still considered, from an overall TEA perspective, part of your general fund, but we break it out so that we can track our expenses for Hurricane Harvey. Now, all of those, those fund numbers that start with a 2 and a 4, those are your federal fund dollars. So, when you see those codes, you'll know that they're spending some federal grant dollars. The numbers that start with a 5, that's my debt service. And remember, I said the board has approved debt service, so that's where we're charging everything for debt service. Now, 696, 697, 698, we report to you monthly on financial, on the bond, and where we are in that, in that case. Those other are agency-type funds. We put monies in those funds, but those funds are, they have to have the dollars in those accounts for the revenue. We can't spend, we just don't spend the expenses. We have to have the dollars to actually have the revenue and the expenses. If you don't have the revenue, you can't spend the money. So, the function codes, they're, as I said, is for a certain function. The ones that you see the most and are most of our expenses is function 11. And we've got some graphs that we're showing in a minute, but this kind of breaks it up and shows you which one of the basic functions. You will see a lot of function 11. You will see a lot, if you see like the school leadership, you'll see your principal's cost under 23. You'll see your guidance council is under 31. Your public transportation is under 34. And all of your child nutrition expenses are under 35. So, you will see those. Now, the cost for Dr. Porterie and Miss Lomary and myself, we are all in the function 41. Those are the expenses that you will see in your school first report that they're capturing and saying, okay, you spent too much on the administrative council. That's where they're looking at, is that function right there, to see how you're spending it. When we have security monitoring services, like your security officers, that's going to be a function 52. Okay, object codes. We get a little deeper, and in the object code, we're explaining not just what function is needed, but how do they plan to use those expenses. So, we have the breakout is payroll, anything that starts with 6100, payroll. Anything that starts with 6200 is professional and contracted services. 6300 is supplies, materials, and then 6400 is kind of a catch-all. Then 6500, you very seldom see that, and we use it for our debt service when we make our debt payments. Debt payments are due twice a year. We spend somewhere around 8 million on debt service. Then you've got your capital expenditures, and we spend most of that on bond. We are looking at them a little bit more this year and have some dollars set aside in 6600 for some maintenance expenses. And that tells you all of the bonuses in that category. So, where are we now? When we look at our revenues and expenses, we anticipate our local taxes are more than previous year. That's the way we budgeted it, is for our local taxes to be more than we would get, than we got the previous year. A couple of things that helped us to anticipate our local taxes increase included a resolution that you passed in August, which allowed us to recoup some of our Hurricane Harvey dollars. State funding, it decreased because as our local funds go up, state funding goes down. The state will ensure that you do not get any more than your fair share. Today, our payroll expenditure tools are running a little behind what we had budgeted, so that's good. Anything that we can save can go back to our unbalanced. Expenditures, they're in line with what we thought they were going to be based on our revised budget. So, again, we're going to go a little bit deeper into exactly where we are. So, we compare it here to show you where our 2017 projections and compare it to where we ended the year for actions. Notice we came in a little bit better. So, we added a few dollars to our fund balance last year because we did, we did get a little more, and we were very good in how we watched our dollars on how we set it.
What is our fund balance? What is our fund balance?
Our fund balance, and it's always on the financial reports. It's 20, right now, I think it's some, you know, 18 million or something, and that's all of the official fund balance you can use as what's there from the year before. But it's somewhere around 18 million. Okay. And then what we did here is kind of show you our projections, and notice what we just described is that, notice our local taxes, we projected local taxes to be at 51 million. This is all we budgeted for. Again, we had some additional local taxes we were expecting, but it wasn't included in our budget to be spent on our regular ongoing expenses. Our state funding went down because our local budget went up, but overall, we were expecting our funds to be about almost 3 million higher in 2018-19 than it was in 1718. Okay. So, we want to talk a little bit about what's going on with us as far as House Bill 3. I'm sure you've heard a lot about House Bill 3, and this is the last week of the legislative session, so we hope to hear something. We hope it's positive because if you see nothing else on this page, look at the very last line that shows that if we compare our projections for 1819 and 1920 on the current law, we're probably going to lose about 2 million. And if we, if House Bill 3 passed based on what the models are showing, again, we're just using the model. It's not, this is not in concrete. We will not know anything until after the session is completed. But right now, it's, it looks like we will get a few more dollars, maybe about 5 billion. But again, it's based on a model, so please don't put those, don't bank on those dollars yet. Okay. So, we want to kind of give you a better understanding of where our payroll, where our payroll dollars, where, where do that money go. Notice here that the biggest portion, and again, you see in the slides, we show them every year. I think even when the auditors were here, they brought, pointed out the exact same thing. 63% of our budget is payroll. That's the biggest part. So, then, did you look and see also that we spend a lot on contracted services? So, then we break down our payroll to look at it a little further and see what is the biggest part of our payroll? Well, the blue, which is the biggest part, is instruction. So, we are spending the biggest dollars for our teachers, with our parent professionals that work in the classroom. So, where are we going? So, these are some potential revenue impacts that we, when we looked at the legislators through the House Bill 3 and Senate Bill 4, to kind of recapture some of those things. We also left in front of you kind of a simple letter that we received from, it was endorsed by several organizations, that kind of gave you, I think, in good terms, reasonable terms, that you can understand what some of the issues are from their perspective with, between House Bill 3 and Senate Bill 4, and some of the challenges that we will face. We know that we will have a significant increase in our recaptured costs as a result of the expiration of the Chapter 313, agree with the Motiva. That means that more value comes online for the district. So, under the current law, it appears that we would owe somewhere around 13 million. But the new law is showing that we would only owe about 734. Please don't take any of this number to the bank because we do not know until it's done what the power distribution impact put off there within the district. Some things that we do know right now is that when we look at our E-rate dollars, and every year we've received, we have been receiving for the last few years about a million and a half, in some years even more, for our E-rate dollars, where we found out that they've changed... Well, we, we found out that they changed the program and certain things are no longer, longer will be, uh, eligible to be, uh, uh, applied to the E-rate dollars. So we're going to, we're going to have some decrease in our E-rate dollars. We're going to have some decrease in our, our student enrollment. We lost students as a result of Hurricane Harvey. Well, this year it didn't impact us as much, because T E A actually gave us an average of the last three years of our enrollment. So we did not feel the effects of that. When we look at what T E A has put in the system going forward, they're going to let the chips fall where they matter. So our number of students will be different. And as you may know, our number of students greatly impacts the value of what we receive in dollars from T E A. And finally, our, our Chapter three thirteen agreement for the board. In fact, they're going this year about two million dollars because of the expiration of our Chapter three thirteen agreements. Those local dollars that we received, and we were able to do some other things, might say other things. Because T E A of our funds are half a day for our pre-K program, we are able to use some of our Chapter three thirteen dollars to have fun a full day for our pre-K students. But we will be able to do less, because our Chapter three thirteen dollars will have rolled down because of the expiration. Good and bad. If they, if they, if they come online and, and they keep the values that they already have, then that's still, we'll still have additional dollars. It just means that the, the state will have more control over the dollars that we receive. With the Chapter three thirteen dollars, the state has no control over what we're doing with those dollars. And beyond our set what we receive from there for. Now, some more impacts. Uh, what happened? Okay, so I, I know you've got the presentation in front of you. And we're going, they're going to look, they're looking at increasing the basic allotment. I know that doesn't mean anything to, uh, what would we say a basic allotment is. But overall, there, there's a difference between what the Senate Bill Five, Senate Bill, uh, Four, and what's listed in House Bill Three. Notice that one says they, they want to increase it by, to six thousand dollars. And Senate Bill Four is, is less. So there are differences. But the one thing that they both feel that should be eliminated, which we hate, we don't think it's right, but they want to eliminate what we call the cost of education index, which means we get a factor that says, just like you have a cost of living factor or something for your area, there's a factor that the district has been given based on our area and our circumstances. And each school district has a cost of education index. The recommendation from the legislators is to eliminate the cost of education index. Nothing we can do to decide that in the good. Both Senate and House have decided that they want to eliminate that. Then they want to move to the current year property values in the calculation they're taking. It's good and bad. It depends on where you're sitting. For most of what I've seen from the groups that tell us how they think about it, such as Task B and, uh, other groups that we've worked with a lot, like, um, the groups that's always been, uh, listed up here, they don't agree with the, with moving to the current day. They, they, they think that, they think we should stay with what we have. It will hurt the student districts. Again, it's not within our control. I think the reason that you receive, we receive letters and different things is they want us to reach out to our legislators and give them our opinion about what we think, what they're doing. Now, notice that the, the issue that I pointed out, that we are funding using our funds for our Chapter three thirteen fund to full, to fund a full day pre-K school, uh, pre-play classes. One of the recommendations from both the House and the Senate is to fund full day pre-K. Okay? And then some other things they're looking at is Senate Bill Four wants to look at, I, I, we, we put all of these together because these are all payroll related. Uh, they, they would like to have the classroom teachers and the librarians a lot. Uh, a five thousand dollars per full-time teacher, I knew you've heard that on TV. But House Bill, that Senate Bill wants that. House Bill has a different view of it. And what they wanted to do is, uh, they wanted to look at that basic allotment again. Don't, don't get hung up on the turd basic allotment. So I put the words down there on what, um, is printed in the paper and the newspaper there, kind of thinking that it means in basic terms is about thirteen eighty-eight is what House Bill is saying as far as teacher increases or raises. But they included in that one, it includes all of the non-administrative pay, not just teachers. The first Senate Bill Four is only focusing on teachers and librarians. But the House Bill recognizes that all employees with the exception of administrators should be increased. So when they increase the overall dollars based on the formula, twenty-five percent of that formula, which are that basic allotment that they're speaking of, twenty-five percent would be dedicated to salary increases. But both the Senate and the House thinks that there should be some teacher and tenant pay allotments. Again, focus back and look at this on what Task B think about those ideas of Senate's, um, allotments of additional performance-based bonuses. One of the things that's, that's clear is that all of these organizations feels that the control should be left to the school districts and the administrators on, and the lords on how we utilize the funds that we receive from T E A, rather than them dictating how we should u- utilize those funds.
Ms. Jeans?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, just in everyday terms, there, the Senate is saying that, okay, let's give the teachers five thousand dollars, but they're not giving us five thousand dollars extra in our budgets to give those teachers those dollars.
Okay, that's that last bullet that I put up there. So what they're doing is, depending on how they plan to do it. The Senate Bill, they were, they got some kind of transition grant, that's what they're calling it. And so they're going to fund it till twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, and then they're on your own.
We will see what they're eating at.
Do you remember back in two thousand and four, when the, when the state decided that they would go, they were lowering the tax rate from a dollar fifty to a dollar? And the state says, we got you, we got you cut. They did cut for a few years, and then they said, okay, well, it's been enough years, you're on your own right now. So that's, that last, uh, bullet is speaking of, it's a temporary solution to a long-term problem. When you increase the rates, we, we can't go back to the employees who say, we want the money back because we're not over at the house.
And there you go.
So those are the challenges that we face when we have this type of mandates.
Because I really want the folks to understand that. That, you know, this is still going to come out, eventually, this is going to come out of our budgets. And it's going to eventually hurt our kids. But the state has said, you know, they look at them team and said, wow, the state must be giving them extra money for that five thousand dollars. They're not.
Right. Temporarily. Okay. Okay, so I believe this is my last slide. So we wanted to just kind of leave you, in our budget discussions with our budget committee, we've come up with a short list of things that we would like to consider. It is not anything that we put in the budget right now, because until this legislative session is over, until we get our certain fact tax rolls, we really don't know how much money we will have in the district to do any of this. We know that some smaller things we will have to do, like the security office. We know we'll have to budget some dollars for it. Those are not major, for the curriculum writer. We want to ensure that we, we raise our budget, that we cover for curriculum writers the amount of dollars that we, we're, we're spending this year. Um, athletic and soccer, uh, we, we want to make sure we, we're implementing in middle school. We need to have some dollars there to be able to fully implement a program for athletic, for soccer, if they are middle school. Reading program, we talked about this when we did the T R E. We said we wanted to look at reading program. But again, until we find where our money is and what we can legitimately spend and what our priorities, priorities are, we can't guarantee that we will be able to do a reading program. We also said in that same T R E study, that analysis that we did and provided to the public, that we wanted to increase the maintenance budget. We are fortunate in our student district that almost all of our schools are new and are greatly renovated. But we do not, we, when we really have a shortage of dollars, we removed all of the maintenance, but we, we got maintenance dollars, but not for major things that came up. So we want to reestablish a maintenance budget that takes care of our students. On the salaries, again, we talked about what the H, what the H, what House Bill Three and Senate Bill Four is recommended. We rec, we want to be able to raise salaries. Again, we can't do anything until we find out what we will receive. The one thing that we know is when we got the insurance, our last property insurance, it went up slightly as a result of Hurricane Harvey. So we, we need to increase our budget for that. When we look at band instruments and we look at the age, we made a decision this new year that we would purchase band instruments for our students. We have to continue to purchase those instruments as long as that's our strategy. We also included that when we did our, in our P R E discussions, we had included. But that's one of the things that we would do, be to fund band instruments. As I mentioned to you earlier, our E-rate dollars are funded, so we have included some employees and, and what we were paying out for E-rate, because we were getting more dollars. But now we need to move those dollars over to our general fund. And then those last two items on our P A P D police force, we will need to increase the vehicles and equipment that we will be, we will be getting some equipment back from Jefferson County. And we will need to look at additional equipment and vehicles that will need to be purchased for P A P D. P A, P A I S D. And then we will need to include dollars for boosters. I believe that's the last one. Any questions?
Yes, ma'am, Madam President. Ms. Jeans, you made a comment, you said, uh, on most of the slides, you were talking about the school first.
Yes.
And you were saying, um, on the, on the, uh, financial side of the House, that it would be difficult to get and pay or be, uh, because of some of the, um, because of what, what are the challenges that school first is, is creating for you and for our, our district as a?
They have rebounded, the, the school first, and they added considerably new measures uh, to the, to what they're looking at. Some of the ones that I saw, they won't be a challenge. Uh, one I saw, you know, looking at your budget, what your adopted budget, comparing it to what you actually spent. So they're saying when you budget, not your revised budget, your original budget. If you can't, if you didn't estimate enough, they don't penalize you.
And what are they going to do with that money?
They don't, it's not money for them. It's a ratings.
It's a rating.
That's all, it's, it's the ratings, that they want to take some points away from you because you did not add a correct budget for your anticipated revenues.
But ultimately, would that affect our dollars in the sense?
Huh?
Ultimately, it would affect your dollars in the sense?
No, but that doesn't affect your dollars.
I, I understand that, uh, along the way with the ratings, if you're not necessarily wanting more, could you?
No, not those type of ratings. What you're speaking of are the ratings that we receive from the rating agencies. I'm speaking of the T E S school first rating.
Okay.
That kind of, it's kind of like your accountability rating. A little school for financial purposes, these are the ratings that says you had adequate budget, you did these certain things, you, you didn't have any audit findings, you, you know, that meeting for me, I was at school. That's what they're speaking of. Any other questions? Okay.
Well, thank you, Ms. Jeans, and for our executive team. A lot of discussions that goes into this, and as you can see, it can get tiring a little sometimes. But I think you do a very good job at keeping it all, uh, in place. Thank you.
At this time, I am going to officially turn the board media over to Dr. Porterie, and we will, uh, proceed with the swearing and receiving. It's Dr. Porterie.
Well, thank you, Madam President. At this time, we will have Pastor Frank. And as we reach the front door, and we'll have Mrs. Chappell do our swearing and receiving, the issuance of certificate, the completion of the statement, and it will be.
Would you like to testify? I state your name.
I, Robert Reed.
Donald Frank.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will obey?
That I will obey.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
Of the Office of Port Arthur I S D School Board Trustee.
Of the Office of Port Arthur I S D Trustee.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will?
And will.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Preserve?
Preserve.
Protect?
Protect.
And defend?
And defend.
The Constitution?
The Constitution.
And the laws?
And the laws.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And of this state?
And of this state.
So help me.
So help me God. Thank you.
Congratulations to both of you.
Look at this audience.
You're being good, right?
At this time, all board positions are vacated, and I open the floor for nominations for the Office of President.
Dr. Porterie?
Yes.
I would like to nominate Brandon Barti for President.
Second.
There is, there is a nomination on the floor for trustee Brandon Barti to serve as Board President. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. There is a nomination and a second for trustee Barti to serve as Board President. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Synanis. President Barti is the president. At this time, I open the floor for nominations for the Office of Vice President.
Dr. Porterie, I'd like to nominate Donald Frank for Vice President.
There is a nomination on the floor for trustee Donald Frank Senior to serve as Board Vice President. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a nomination and second for trustee Donald Frank to serve as Board Vice President. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Trustee Frank will serve as Vice President, President of the Boards. At this time, I open the floor for nominations for the Office of Secretary.
Mr. Porterie?
Yes.
Dr. Porterie, I nominate trustee Robert Reed for the Office of Secretary.
There is a nomination on the floor for trustee Robert Reed to serve as Board Secretary. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a nomination and second for trustee Reed to serve as Board Secretary. All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Trustee Reed will serve as Secretary of the Board.
At this time, we will have the fifteen minute, uh, session. Under the authority of the Texas Government Code, Section five five one point zero seven one and five five one point zero seven four. The Board will meet in closed meeting two. In so many terms regarding pending or complicated litigation, including settlement offers and other legal matters on which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rule of professional conduct of the State Board of Texas are clearly covered by attorney-client privilege. Consider personnel recommendation, Texas Government Code five five one point zero seven four as follows. Consider and if appropriate approve employment of teachers. Consider and if appropriate approve, approve twenty nineteen, twenty twenty law renewal of term contract. Consider and if appropriate approve termination of contract employee. Open meeting will be at seven.
There is cake in the back, uh, please help.
Okay, staff for Dr. Porter.
Okay. Thank you, President Barti. What we've had, we have a lot of going on right now. Uh, I want to thank our board members who were attended, in attendance for the two thousand and nineteen retirement and years of service held on Wednesday, May fifteenth. It really, really was a big success, and I think everyone appreciated you all being there. Uh, they're still talking about it, so we're really happy that that has been over well. We also had the Teacher of the Year Celebration on Wednesday, May eighth. And that went well at the Holiday Inn. Our Elementary Teacher of the Year is Mrs. J L, J L Moody, and Secondary, Secondary Teacher of the Year is Mrs. Oner Walker. So they're still ecstatic, uh, they're happy and smiling and everything is well with them. We had the Superintendent Student Advisory Awards and Dr. 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 Getwood's office along with Mrs. Taffey and Dr. Mitchell. Uh, put everything together and it really went well. Uh, we gave out, we awarded ten thousand eight hundred dollars to thirty-five students. So, uh, the money that we raised for those students is to give them a start at the beginning. Uh, there were four hundred and two hundred fifty dollar awards, so we know students need luggage, we know students need, need, some students need five books. So we were happy to award those students and they were happy as well. Uh, Teacher Advisory, we had the ending celebration for them at the Holiday Inn and they were really happy with what was going on. Memorial High Prom, we had a wonderful prom. The students were dressed well, it went without incident, so they were happy. Of course, you know, it's a Port Arthur affair, cars were up and up the highway, they were down Ninth Avenue. They were parked across the street everywhere, so we were really happy. And, uh, parents, when they got a kick out of it. At Lamar, Lamar State College had its graduation on last Friday. And I tell you, it was, it was just, it was just wonderful to see our students graduating with their associates. There were a lot of our students, there were sixty-one individuals from Port Arthur, mostly graduating from Memorial High School. Uh, we had six welders, we had five drafting, uh, uh, students. Uh, and, and three of them, as you know, if you saw in the paper, which I did bring today, I was really happy to get the paper today. I love it when we have positives, so our students, three of our students received jobs. Uh, so that's from Gulf Copper, so welding and precision metal. So we were really, really happy with that, uh, one of our own. Uh, uh, Vice President Frank kind of led the charge on getting some of that going on. And we were just happy, so that was our first signings. Uh, and, and everyone was saying, you know, we, we have signings for, uh, for sports, but this is a signing for jobs, so that was really, really good. So the kids, uh, the, I moved on kids and board, the students, I think, were happy. They were somber and I think it was well appreciated, so we, we're just really, really happy. One of our students who graduated welding, he's moving on to Prairie Beauty to continue his education and, uh, engineering, so that's a good thing. Um, we had one student, uh, Tevin Baker, and we, and that was the exciting part for me. You know, they gave the three highest awards, uh, at Lamar State College, and they called Tevin's name, he is a Memorial High School graduate. He had a four point oh his entire time at, uh, Lamar State College. And he received the highest award given that night, and I think that was just magnificent. And there were so many memorial students there and their parents, so it was just great to see. So our students are moving and going on to college and being successful and getting jobs as well, so we're happy. Uh, the Royal League Club sponsored scholarships and our students were there last week to receive their scholarships. Flynn Hills gave our scholarships to our students. So, um, well, we received, you will hear this next tomorrow night, we received a total, it was a total of five point two million dollars in scholarships. So that was a good thing. Last night, the PAIG gave out eight ten thousand dollar scholarships. So those students were awarded those on last night, so that was a wonderful, wonderful, uh, activity. And then we had, uh, Banda who received, um, she's in the paper, she, I think, yeah, she was in the paper. She received a scholarship in soccer, and then we had another received a scholarship in volleyball. So, um, not just football and basketball anymore, it's, it's being spread out, all sports, so we were really, really happy about that. And of course, last week and this week, we were testing like crazy. So it was, it was, I think our, our teachers and our school district personnel have done absolutely wonderful job at preparing our students. And they really, they really focused, they really have worked. And I must give kudos to Memorial High School. They have, that staff has bent over backward to ensure that the students were able to graduate. You know, some of our students, they, uh, get a little displaced sometimes. But that faculty has been there Friday night, Saturday all day, Sunday, helping the students with the Senate, the Senate bill. I think it's one forty-three, uh, one forty-nine, and they have to make up time. And Sunday, they were there till nine o'clock last, uh, nine o'clock that night, but they were there all day. And I, I have to, Dr. Mitchell, um, Miss, uh, Dr. Coleman, Miss Como, Mr. Wagner, there were teachers there as well. Uh, there was a teacher with her son, he was there on Saturday. On Sunday, the time. Uh, they, but, but they can't, you know, we have to go there with them. Again, you know, so, yeah, they have to do projects, a lot of projects. And I must say, I have to, and I must, uh, commend, uh, Mrs. Dr. Kelsey. There was a young lady, um, that was there on Saturday, she's deaf, and she had a language barrier. So there wasn't even one there, so I did call Dr. Kelsey, she came right on. And her, she worked all day Saturday, she went back Sunday, and her staff helped the young girl with her project. And got it and they presented, the young girl had to present the project on yesterday and did a wonderful job. But, uh, she has a story, the young girl has a story, so, uh, Dr. Kelsey was just, I think she was best benef, she benefited more by helping this young lady than actually the young lady, because there was a lot to go into that. But all that to say, our, our faculty and our staff members were tirelessly, they bent over backward. So I'm gonna, I, and I've said it before, if you can't be a success in the Port Arthur Independent School District, you can't be a success anywhere. Because we will buy clothing, we will, we will buy food, we will help you wash, we will take, pick you up, we'll get the buses to pick you up, we'll take you home. In the middle of the night, in the morning hours, anything you need, we help parents. As a matter of fact, there was a parent there Saturday with us as well. So there's no reason why you cannot be successful if you're here with us. And the main thing, we care about these kids, we love these children. And I think, I mean, I cannot think, I mean, it was, it's just wonderful to see the staff work, and they have done a great job. Dr. Getwood will speak on testing and anything else, uh, from the testing for elementary, Dr. Minis killed today, uh, testing and what has gone on, but, uh, he's been, I, I, I've missed him. I missed, we try to get missed, but they've been in the field, uh, with principals and supporting it. Because as you know, there's a lot to go on with our parents, and you know, I will say to Dr. Getwood, may, uh, say something else. We've had to deal, we deal with, with students, but recently, we've had to deal with a lot of parents. Unfortunately, with some things, the issues that we shouldn't have to deal with. And so parents are becoming our issue now as well. Along with dealing with the mental issues and everything else that are coming upon us. But parents have really, we've had to deal with some, some parents also. So we're learning that, because that's not in our, uh, job description, that's somebody say, but we do it anyway. Dr. Getwood.
Thank you, Dr. Porterie. The evening board president, uh, want to, members of the board trustees and, uh, Dr. Porterie. I'm gonna please, uh, end, end the report to you, uh, that the, uh, testing season, the bulk of the testing season, uh, has ended. The very last round of state testing will occur this summer. And that will be for, uh, E O C students as well as fifth and eighth graders who are retaking the test. You know, the fifth and eighth graders will get to the top of the list to retake the test. And, uh, they, uh, also will, it will impact their promotion. So, uh, we have to prepare those students, even though we don't know, uh, who they are at this point. Uh, we will enroll them as a safeguard in our summer school program to ensure that if they need the test, we have them there. Um, so without being able to report the exact number of students, uh, even, even with E O C. We will just enroll students and it's easier to pull them out and enroll them. So we'll do that. Uh, and I probably would be somewhat remiss tonight if I didn't mention, uh, the hard work and the great sacrifices of, uh, department leaders, principals, uh, curriculum supervisors, teaching staff, which is staff, parents, and grandparents in support of students and their learning issue. That's the case every year in P I S D. And at this level, uh, we have in conjunction with outstanding, uh, school leadership or principals or instructional leaders, uh, at the schoolhouse. We've implemented several research-based initiatives, uh, aligned with and supportive of the district's curriculum. So those things that we've done, they're in support of the district's curriculum. Uh, and we have come up with intervention, uh, strategies and practices to help students. Even though we attempt to do what's right in tier one first with students, we still have students, we have to work with, uh, an intervention stand, intervention standpoint. So we work with those students as well. Uh, and all the training that we have talked about, uh, campuses at the campus level, you know, Dr. Porterie is always concerned, we are too, about transferring it to the classroom, transferring it to students, uh, to teachers. We have been very successful, uh, in having the campuses embrace those kinds of things that we have implemented this year. So we feel real good about the things that we've done at the campus level in preparation for what I like to call game day, and that's state testing. Uh, the state accountability system is very rigorous. Um, it expects students to pass, but not at the same rate they passed the previous year. They expect them to pass at a higher rate or, uh, given with more test items this year. So we're looking at a rigorous test, we're looking at a test where we got three domains that we were working through, and those domains are student achievement, student progress, and closing the gaps. So you know, and I know that, and we'll be very delicate in saying that. You know, and I know that every student doesn't come to us with the same skills. So the playing field isn't always equal. But here's what we do as a P I S D team. We take the students where they are, and we try to get them where they need to be, uh, within, in forms of academic success as well as the test itself. So we would say this, we would say this to you all. Regardless of the outcomes, I want you to be assured that, uh, a great effort was made across the district and at all levels, um, to help each student reach his academic potential and meet the demands of state, the state, uh, accountability system. Um, and we would not, uh, have like the night go without saying, thank you, Dr. Porterie. Thank you, Board of Trustees, for your leadership as we move this, that district through the journey of excellence. Thank you, Dr. Porterie.
And, go ahead.
Have a question, ma'am. Dr. Getwood, I just wanna, I wanna, um, inquire is to, Ms. Jean mentioned something in her budget considerations, and we possibly have to increase the turnaround plan. Dr. Getwood, how will all of that affect the plans?
Well, the turnaround plan was implemented as a result of the high school being, uh, an improved requirement, I R. So we're very thankful that we were able to move, we didn't have, we don't have any students in I R. And so you had to maintain a certain level of funding for the campus even after it was removed from the I R list. So at this point, we are not having to dedicate funds to that campus or to the Memorial, uh, High School campus because it's out of I R status. But you can rest assured through supplement funding sources, they will still have enough funds to do what they need to do to maintain, uh, at a level higher than improving.
And there are parts of the plan that we felt, Dr. Getwood, Dr. Mitchell felt, that we needed to implement even though we were not I R. And that is what we've done, so we're not at the full capacity of spending what we thought we were, that we would have had to if we were. But there are some components of that plan that were terrific, and we just felt that we needed that in order to maintain where we are now and to move to a higher level.
Dr. Porterie, I wanted to say thank you as well for all the support that he gave, uh, with, uh, the cake building. Individuals really don't understand, uh, that that is one of the best-kept secrets of our school district, what's happening in that cake building. And we were grateful to have the opportunity to align, uh, with a business in our, uh, in the district and to do what we did, bigger and better things are alive. Then again, thank you as well for the opportunity, because you, because you knew about, uh, the money that was given by, uh, Harrison and Cornberg and Creative Corrections to have our, help our children to take their tests for cosmetology, uh, and, uh, the nursing program. And because of that, twenty-three of them have been able to pass. Uh, and so many times what happens with our students is they, they pass the, the, uh, the, uh, course part, but they don't have the money to, to go and to take the test. And so, um, that five thousand dollars that was donated was for them to go and to have the opportunity to take the test. So, I mean, it, it's just some great things going on, and, uh, thank you so much.
And it, and it's, and it's so good to see our children wanting to do well, you know? Even if that's why we're here to help them, as you said, a lot of them do not have the funds, um, to meet everything. So that's why we try to do, like we've said, and others, knowing to help those students to get what they need in order to be successful. And that is what education is all about. It's, it's, uh, it saddens all of us in education to understand, because we still want to go, those of us who have taught for a while, we understand what it is to teach the whole child and not focus on a test. And that is what we want to one day possibly go back to, teaching the entire child, teaching every subject, every subject matters. Science, social studies, English, math, uh, career tech, cosmetology, home ec, all of those, all of those courses matter. And you, you know, there are different students today and they, they have so many opportunities. And we have come to the realization that every student will not go to college and earn a four-year degree. But every student has to be successful and take care of themselves and their families, so.
I didn't ask a question to Mrs., uh, I didn't ask, you guys are educated, it's not what my degree is in, but when Mrs., um, uh, Jean was talking about it and she was talking about all of the things that are necessary, what the state is going to do. Does the state really understand what is needed to educate children in college?
The state says they understand, but I'm not exactly sure, um, if they give us, well, I know they're United, well. I'm going to say that, well, I'm looking at Marymore. I'm going to say that, well, I'm looking at Mary Moore.
Very good. Scratch that, Dan.
I think the state wants to help every child, I really do. I think we have, we are seeing now in the United States, I just import often, we're seeing a different child, a different type of learner, because they're not it. Uh, poverty is something you have to really, really understand in order to address it. You can't just think that students are poor and they can't get it, that, that just doesn't work. Uh, and then you always have to understand that students are in environments that are not their fault, and they don't know how to deal with that. And we have to shift, and, and Mrs. Uh, uh Mrs. Arsenal Bailey will give you uh some history and a summary over the Meadows Grant. We're dealing with mental illnesses, we're dealing with poverty, we're dealing with abandonment, we're dealing with hunger. We're dealing with all sorts of things before we start the academic teachings, you know, we. And how can a student learn if they're hungry? You know, we have to address all those issues. I think you heard last time at the lights, uh when the power went out two weeks ago, uh I thought it was Admiral of Dr. Mitchell, he wanted the kids to come, and he said, if you can't wash your clothes, bring them to Memorial High School, and we'll allow you to wash your clothes, we'll allow you to take a shower, just come to school. You know, sometimes, and you know, I think that, you know, sometimes, we have to allow a student to take a nap, because we don't know what has happened to them at home, not before. So, before we teach them, we have to meet other needs, we have to meet their personal needs. And I'll say this, even though we understand we have rules, we have laws, and we have student code of conduct, sometimes students are better off with us than they are at home. And we don't take that lightly, and we don't mind keeping them, and we don't mind helping them, we don't mind loving them, and knowing what we need to do in order to help them to be successful.
Thank you, sir.
So, I'm gonna ask Mrs. Bailey to talk about the Meadows Grant, they've worked really, really hard on that, it deals with all kinds. And we, and we want to partner with our community, and I think uh she's done a great job of getting that together.
Thank you, Dr. Porter. Uh, to our president, RT, and then to our board of trustees and Dr. Porter. Just wanna give you an overview of the Meadows Mental Health Policy Institute Texas Cares Grant. They're based out of Dallas. They're based out of Dallas, and they are working in conjunction with AmeriRight Profs. And so, we started working with them at the beginning of the school year, and they actually came from Dallas and completed a site visit. They met with Dr. Porter, they met with the social workers, they met with selected principals, and, and of course, myself. And so, it was very, very detailed, and that's how we really got it started. It is a two-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-dollar grant, and we will be receiving our remaining of our funds tomorrow. So, the check is in the mail, so we're very, very excited about it. And so, we actually found out about this grant, they actually approached us mainly because it, it was kind of like an aftermath after Harvey. How can they tap into the community, and they knew that we were hit really, really hard. And we're still struggling from the start. And so, based on this grant and all, they have given us so many great ideas. But if you recall, as board members, you approved the Samaritan Counseling Center of Southeast Texas, the Spindeltop Center, and Genesis Learning Center. And they have done a magnificent job in the schools over the last couple of months. I will say the social workers and counselors have done an exceptional job, and the administrators, because they were actually going in to work with our kids even sometimes during testing time. And so, we were juggling and maneuvering with the scheduling throughout the whole time. And so, that's been really, really positive. We also have to complete quarterly reports, uh and I'm usually on the phone with them several times per week, because it is a detailed report, and when you have that type of money that they're giving you, they want additional information. So, I've had to keep really, really detailed records of what we spent, invoices, things of that nature, and POs. Uh, additionally, one of the other things that we've already purchased with the grant is the Carriage Education Curriculum. So, that is K through twelve curriculum. We uh worked with the counselors and uh the support staff, and so, that is going to be fully implemented as we move into the nineteen-twenty school year. We're looking to provide a professional library for our counselors, our social workers, and even our teachers. And so, we'll be working on that this summer as well. One of the conversations that we had is about building a sensory room. Most of our newer campuses have a sensory room, but it's built, rebuilding other things to help stimulate our students, or really just try to help our students, our special needs students, students with attention deficit disorder, students with attention deficit hyperactivity. And so, we're also going to use that money as well for that particular unit across the district. And again, principals have been very, very open to that. One of the things that the social workers are going to do this summer is work with the teen parenting. And we're also going to rebuild our teens unit by really beefing up, we're going to be purchasing them furniture, different DVDs, uh also bringing in the fathers of the kids, and really trying to support that through a counseling session this summer. And our social workers will be working with that over that sixteen-day period. And so, we got really, really creative with the grant. I will say, the lady that is working with me out of Dallas, they, we actually talked with them, we had a nervous uh conversation, what else can we do with the grant, and being really creative as we move forward. What we have on the table tonight is the Willie Carter Community Outreach Center, and I'll share a little bit about that. Most of you know Johnny Ewan, and um he actually has been working with this for, what, the last nineteen years, from the way he explained. But through this grant, he's going to be able to do even more for the community. So, save the date for August third, twenty-nineteen. It's entitled Citywide Youth Explosion: A Healthy Start to School. And it'll be at the Carl Parker Center, and it'll be from ten AM to two PM. And so, part of that, what you'll see when you're there will be free shoes for our students, we're going to have free lunch for anyone that's there. We're going to be giving out backpacks and items inside the backpacks. And uh also, we're going to have twenty-five community-based uh individuals, such as Samaritans, Spindeltop, and others that will be part of that, giving out literature and research, how else can we better help our students. So, that will be a big piece on August third. In addition, what we're asking for you to approve tonight is the Cognito Solutions LLC. That was one of the uh initiatives that the Meadows Mental Health shared with us, and it's been research-based, it's been proven. And so, what we're going to do is moving forward into the next school year is provide an opportunity for our principals, our staff, all the adults that work with children. This will be a simulation, like modules, and it'll be self-paced. We can do it during balcony meetings, we can do it as a whole. One of the uh ideas that we have is that we will train the social workers first, and then the pastors in the summer, and also going into our curriculum conference, which is October fourth. So, we're going to roll it out during that period. Even though our grant will be ending at the end of August, if you all approve tonight Cognito, they will still be working with us through next year, and it's a year grade that we'll be working with. So, and we could, and it's also gonna be kind of a competitive-type thing. And you know, our campuses love to be competitive, so they will actually bring out a dedicated account manager that will work with us to facilitate uh everything that we're doing step by step. So, it'll be a process more like a trainer of trainers. They will also be able to show us how the monitoring of the behavior changes. And we currently work with PB uh for positive behavior intervention in our schools already, and this module actually supports what we're already doing. So, it's just a great opportunity, and it's already funded through Meadows Mental Health. I will say, they have just been very open, it is a very detailed grant, but it's been really well worth it. And um I also wanna thank the board as well for approving the other two social workers, because now we have four in the district, and they have brought so much more wealth of information and ground to cover with our students. One of the other things we've noticed is that our adults, our teachers, our staff still have issues. And so, one of the things that Genesis did was actually go in and start working with staff, maybe in the balcony lounge. But then they took it over to their own location, because sometimes you want to have that privacy. And they are actually in conjunction with them, working with others on how they can better help themselves. Ultimately, that's helping our students. So, I'm real excited about this journey, I feel like it's a journey, and I'm real excited. I thank Dr. Porter for his support as well uh with this initiative. And I just look forward to other great things that we're doing in Port Arthur. Thank you.
Trustee Ambrose.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Jean. I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Of the uh monies in the two-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-dollar grant, you mentioned something about a professional library.
Yes, ma'am.
That is assuming for the.
Just mental health-related issues, we're going to ask counselors, social workers, teachers, what, what else do they need in their library to help better kids and to work with our students?
Will there actually be a medical professional associated with this program at all?
Not, well, through, these are trained licensed counselors, uh through the Cognito or through just the other? I named the Samaritan counseling groups, all those are licensed individuals that have been working with our students. Yes, ma'am.
As we move on, also, uh you know, this is the time of year that we're hiring staff, so HR is really busy. Uh, and we, and we thank principals, because they've been looking for people, and they're trying to get the best people for their campus. So, Ms. Vondo, where are we?
Thank you. Um, members of the board trustees, we are. Members of the board trustees, we um in the HR department are currently working to fill a hundred-and-nineteen positions. Okay, sorry. We are currently working to fill a hundred-and-nineteen positions. Initially, that's just, that sounds like a lot, but keep in mind, over all of the campuses, we average anywhere from just two open uh teacher positions to twelve or fourteen. So, with all the campuses we have, that number is really not as high as it would seem. We've got thirty-seven individuals who are currently in some phase of the recruitment process that we are working to get um hired before the start of the school year, and we will continue our efforts through the summer, attempting to get as many of the positions as possible. Thank you.
Any questions, trustees?
Okay, as we, um, as I said, we've had a lot of award celebrations this week, a lot of fifth-grade graduations, and parents attended Sam Houston's, Sam Houston's uh fifth-grade graduation today, and it was packed with parents. I mean, it was, and it was so beautiful, because there was so much room, because we have the auditorium night, not now, you know, it was not, we weren't wrapped. But I mean, the parents were, there were balloons everywhere. So, parents are really happy about that. Tomorrow night, we will uh honor and recognize four-hundred-and-ninety students at seven o'clock at the Montane Center uh as they walk across the stage, so we will cheer and support them. Last day of school is tomorrow, students, we have an early dismissal that has gone out to parents, so parents understand that their children will get home early. And then we will come back ready for in-service on May twenty-eighth to get ready for summer school, and we'll welcome them back. They go home, they rest a couple of days, then they come back, and we will welcome them and get ready for all the summer activities that are in your uh book this evening. That concludes our staff reports, and there's so many other things, but we've taken, I mean, that concludes us now. Okay, and we also have um the delegates with, um, we have the delegates, we talked about that um earlier, tasky delegate assembly, O two, and then you have that, and the two delegates will be, uh Donald Ray Frank will be senior, will be the delegate, and our alternate will be Mrs. Deborah Ambrose.
Okay, minutes. Consider that appropriate, approve minutes of the April twenty-fifth, twenty-nineteen board meeting, under motion?
Motion.
Motion being by, by, uh, Brown and.
Second name, second?
Second. Second by uh Vice President Frank, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion aye. Consider agenda. The following items, which are of a routine or recurrent nature, have been designated consent agenda items by the president, board president, per policy be local. All of the items in the consent agenda will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a trustee. In which event, the item or items will be withdrawn immediately for individual consideration in its normal sequence after the items not requested separate discussion has been acted upon. Trustees, if you miss to look at the consent agenda.
President Barti on last floor fifteen.
Chair, a motion to accept consent agenda's items one through fourteen.
Motion.
And one to fourteen, and sixteen and seventeen.
Motion.
Sorry. Motion being moved by Mrs. Ambrose, and seconded by Secretary Reed, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Reed.
Thank you, President Barti. Dr. Porter, just simply, um, I'm asking you to discuss the details of the formation of the.
Sorry, Mr. Reed, can I get a motion on the floor?
I'll give you a motion.
Okay, motion, that's seconded by Mrs., motion on the floor by uh Secretary Reed, and seconded by Mrs. Ambrose, Mr. Reed.
Uh, just a simple question, Dr. Porter, now, what are the details of the formation of this police department?
The details at this time is that we're asking the board to consider uh reinstating, if you recall, we did have a police force at one time. Uh, then we went to the ASAP program. The ASAP program has changed a lot since its inception, and so has um the environment. Uh, I think it would be beneficial for us to have our own police force, and also noted that they would work with uh Precinct Eight, Precinct Two, and the Port Arthur Police Department. If, if, you know, we, we have a lot of, we, we wanna make sure that our community understands that we want our staff as well as our students safe at all times. We always want to be in uh in conjunction with everyone, we want people to understand that uh we are there. We understand there are a lot of questions about police officers and students, police officers and community people. However, we know that we want our students to respect law enforcement. We want our students to be involved with law enforcement and to understand that they can go to them, not just uh on a negative aspect, but for help as well. And with our police force, we can be in charge of that. So, we're hoping to post a chief. We're hoping to post a chief immediately that would help us get uh get everything in gear. We have to come up with a needs assessment, we have to make sure that uh the police force has everything it needs in order to be successful as well.
Uh, this is what I have to ask you. Uh, first of all, I totally agree with you that it is our responsibility to provide the safest environment possible for kids and employees while they're in school buildings. Um, so, I, I definitely am not overlooking that. However, my concern is this, uh, we just talked about um our budget heading into the two-thousand-nineteen-twenty school year. And when I look at the possibility of us maybe having some issues with funding possibility, I get concerned about what I feel is gonna be an extra, quite a bit extra amount of funding from what we've done in the past, simply because the employees that we hire for the police department, we're paying their, their salaries, we're paying their health insurance, they're getting the full benefit package which they should receive as employees in Port Arthur Independent School District. We're also paying for everything that they need in the formation of their own police department, and I think you understand the details, but that concerns me compared to what other alternatives we may have that would ensure the safety of our students and employees in all buildings in the school district. And so, as we fund this police department and everything that it entails, I wonder if something else may. I wonder if something else may give in what we fund for the school district. And, and keep in mind, I'm not compromised. I don't feel like, uh, the suggestion, I'm, I'm, I'm not even giving it a suggestion. But I mean, I don't ever wanna compromise the safety of our students. But at the same time, I don't think this district has ever compromised the safety of students with what we've done in the past. So I, I do want you to understand that I applaud you on one hand with definitely being concerned with safety, trying to do something better. But as Jeanne's just laid out, the possible scenarios that we're looking at with our budget, how much money we have entering the next academic school year. I'm concerned if this is a cost, we can swallow.
To answer your question, we have nine slots. The extra would be the chief. Uh, we have said that we would keep our same budget. When you say equipped, we, and as you said, even with the ASAP program, we paid salaries. We paid insurance. We paid retirement. We purchased cars. We have all, we had all of those individuals already. The only difference is, we paid Jefferson County because we did not have the, uh, the paperwork or the T-clos or whatever, what we needed to order, in order to have a police force. But we paid Je-, uh, Jefferson County and paid the same thing. So, and, and I don't think the cost would be too much more. As I said, there will be some things that we will have to do. But I do not think the cost would be too astronomical where we wouldn't be able to fund everything that we needed for the police force.
I, I think I'm, I'm looking at some other things that we would have to provide. I know that, uh, without going into detail, we received a, a list of suggestions from our previous, uh, personnel that, or not personnel, the previous leadership that secured our schools. And to me, though, that list of suggestions would have to be provided for a new police department. That's why I was asking for some details. Um, I, I, and again, I want you to understand, I'm, I'm pulling on the floor, but just, uh, the funding of it. And, uh, I, I wanna just make sure that we're, we're being, uh, responsible with what we may be looking at, with the possible shortfall that we've had in the past.
Okay, I know the, the need that we have, we need a needs assessment, which we have, you know, the need is there. Uh, funding, uh, funding source for the agency of the police department, which would, it would be housed at the high school. The physical resources available to office, officers, that would be our schools, because we would have offices at each one. The physical facilities that the law enforcement agency of police department will operate, the chief would have to have an office. There is a position, there is an office at the high school. They have to have an evidence room, which we have room for. They have to have a dispatch area, which we have room for. And the public area, which they would sit in, in the area where, um, parents come in now. And the office is right there for the police. Uh, we have to look at, uh, vehicle pursuit. We have three or four vehicles right now. We would have to, a lot of our, several of our vehicles are, uh, a little older that we're gonna have to replace, which we would have to replace anyway with the ASAP. Uh, we have to look at the rule of them of the domestic abuse protocols, the response to missing persons, supervision of part-time officers, impartial police officers, evidence collection, all of those things, which we already do. So as I said, the, uh, the liability insurance is something that we have to look at, uh, documents, uh... So basically, we were doing all of those things with the ASAP program. The only extra would be the chief that we would have. And I think having a chief to oversee and to work with Constable Bates, Constable Collins, and Chief Durisso would bring strength, uh, to the entire. Uh, we want, we want the police force to work with our students, not only to help us internally, but we want them to become familiar with them outside of school, to help them not to get into, uh, unanticipated trouble. So a lot of this, we already do. We just haven't to reinstate it.
I appreciate your answers. Thank you, Mr. President.
Trustee Ambrose.
Dr. Porterree. Um, will this, these positions be filled with certified peace officers? Or will they be in Penexap and Law, in San Francisco, in Port Arthur?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. That's what I need. So, thank you.
Vice President.
Dr. Porterree, one of the questions that I have, since we are discussing this, is do we encumber any, um, li- any extra liability by, one, by being the ones, uh, who have the police force as opposed to the county being the ones who are working, who are working under the county's certificate? Now, since we take on that responsibility, if we are, do we encounter any extra liability, say if something happens or transpires with one of our police officers? Uh, to, 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 a child is injured, uh, in, you understand?
I understand. And let me say this, we will have the insurance, the liability insurance. But even in prior, if something would happen with one of our officers and a student, we would still be liable. We never, even with the ASAP officers, we never gave up that. You know, anything happens in our schools, it's on us, you know, it's our fault, and I, whatever it is. So, but we do, we will have it covered with insurance. Uh, we're hoping, and we think, you know, if we choose the right individuals, that they can help us with our students. We don't, we don't want it to look as though we're bringing the police force in, and we want it to look like a jail, or we want students to think, uh, we don't trust them or their parents. But it has come to a day in which we have to have security. And we looked at, I think some suggestions were to have hall monitors, which we do. The hall monitors do not bring the same strength as a police officer. But we also know that we want our police officers to respect our students and work with our students and help them to be better individuals as well. And they're working with and for us, so we will be able to have more of a handle on that.
I think one of the things we have to remember as well, because we were talking about what the rate was for a police officer on, on duty and how much we were paying all those officers. And that those, that, you know, they're related astronomically to some money in overtime.
Correct.
In our, in our district as well.
And we're going to put it out there, we hope that, um, the individuals that are applying, as I said, we have, right now, we have four, we have nine slots, four of which are filled and five that will need to be filled. And we hope we can get the best individuals and people who want to come and work with the Port Arthur Independent School District and our children. Uh, we want to put the chief, get the chief as quick as possible to put, so they can, so he or she can help us to create the foundation and work with the four officers that we do have and move forward.
Madam Attorney, please, be prepared to have.
Uh, yes, Mr. President. Um, on the agenda, we have two items that are listed as fourteen, two items that are listed as fifteen. So I would ask that the motion that you are considering right now, instead of it being item fifteen, that it be item fifteen B. And after you have approved that item or voted on that item, that you go back up and you handle the first item fifteen as fifteen A, and the second item fourteen is fourteen B.
So I need that for the motion, the second is voted?
The, the motion that's on the floor is admitted as fifteen B. And that's the motion concerning the resolution in the establishment of a police department. So that's fifteen B that's on the floor right now.
Okay, all in favor for fifteen B? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Also?
We have item on the floor, we have motion.
We need a motion for fifteen A and fourteen B.
I get a motion for fifteen A and fourteen B.
Motion.
Second.
Motion being made by Secretary Reed and seconded by Trustee Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Personnel. Consider and if appropriate, approve employment of teachers. Dr. Porter?
Yes, you have a list of teachers for your consideration?
Yes, I get a motion for consideration of employment of teachers.
So, Mr. President, I, I, I move that we approve the appointment of teachers?
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Brown and seconded by Trustee Ambrose. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Consider if appropriate, consider that if appropriate, approve twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty non-renewal of term contract. Is it a motion? So move, second.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Lofton and seconded by Trustee Ambrose. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Consider, consider that if appropriate, approve termination of contract employees. Motion?
Uh, approve termination of contract employees.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Brown and seconded by Vice President Frank. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Information, Dr. Porter?
The average daily enrollment, eight thousand three hundred fifty-eight, average daily attendance, ninety-three point fifty-four percent.
Gotta get a motion to a general meeting at seven fifty-three. So move.
Second.
Need this, Jer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.